Softball game, I remember, not softball, volleyball game. And there's, man, all this yelling stuff, so I had to excuse myself. I had to go leave. We're on. Okay, we will go ahead and call this meeting of the September 19th Planning Commission to order. Kai, have we posted the meeting in accordance with the Kansas Open Meeting Act?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Great. Dean, roll call.
Call the role of members present. Commissioner Farber.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Van Covern.
Present.
Commissioner Seidell.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Chair Mike Sell.
Here.
So we have a quorum of seven members present. We have provided advance notice of today's meeting, so we have the jurisdiction to move forward and consider today's meeting agenda.
Thank you. Hope you've all had a chance to look at the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2023 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None being heard in motion carries. Dean, new business.
We have a number of public hearing items for you. We have item 3.1 is a public hearing on the proposed relocation of Fire Station Number Four. As you may all know, the existing Fire Station Number Four is located at the northwest corner of Marymount and Crawford. And there is a proposal to relocate and construct a new replacement station at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. And there are two applications associated with that. The first one is a request to rezone a site for the fire station from its current agricultural designation to a public use, public facilities zoning classification. And then associated with that is a plat to create a platted building lot for the future station. Mr. Aiken is going to be presenting you the report on the zoning request, 3.1A. And then Mr. Hirsch is going to be presenting the report on item 3.1B. If the, it's up to the chair and the commission, but if you so desire, we could have staff present the two reports for sub-item A and B, and then have the commission take action on each of those after both reports have been presented. Or you can have the report and take action on the zoning request and then move to item B. I'll.
I think it would be appropriate to do both of them together as they're related, unless there's any commissioners who have any problem with that.
So we'll, we'll cover both aspects of it and then circle back and then let you ask questions because there may be questions that cut across both applications. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Aiken to tell you about the zoning request.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So as Dean said, our first item today is a request filed by the city's fire department to rezone a site at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area, which is located at the southeast corner of Crawford Street and Markley Road. And they're proposing to go from A1 agricultural to PPF in order to construct a new 20,147 square foot fire station building on a 4.57 acre site. There's a lot of background here, so I will very much abbreviate it the best I can. So the city of Salina acquired the Salina Municipal Airport property, which this, is this, which is the proposed location of this new fire station in 1928, and it consisted of approximately 305 acres bounded by Crawford Street on the north, agricultural land on the east, the Country Hills addition number two on the west, and Cloud Street, and the Wheatland Valley addition on the south. The municipal airport ceased operations in 1965 and was demolished in 1966. And then also later in 1966, the Salina Golf Course began construction. In the 1980s, the construction of the Berkeley Recreation, Recreation Area baseball and softball fields began, and there were also multiple KDOT projects that were completed. Some of those include widening Crawford Street from two lanes to four west of Markley Road, constructing curbs, gutters, paving, grading, drainage infrastructure and utilities on Crawford Street, and constructing a roadway connection from Markley Road to Crawford Street. So the city's fire department has filed this rezoning request because there's a need for an updated fire station building and training facility to replace the Fire Station Four site located at Marymount Road and Crawford Street, which was built back in 1969. So as stated, the, the new site of the new fire station is part of the city-owned Berkeley Family Recreation Area, which is currently zoned A1. And A1 zoning does not allow fire stations when located within 300 feet of residentially zoned property, which you have directly to the north. So the fire station that's being proposed here would be multifunctional with various types of uses. There would be five fire truck bays, temporary dwelling quarters for sleeping overnight, training infrastructure, and a multipurpose event space. And it's going to be quite larger than the existing Fire Station Four, which is just under 4,000 square feet. This one's going to be a little over 20,000 square feet. So there's a 50-foot wide access drive that's being proposed at the southwest corner of the site, abutting Markley Road, and also a 110-foot wide access opening abutting Crawford Street. And no internal public streets are being proposed here. So the P zoning district is intended to be a special zoning district for many of the city's public, semi-public, and governmental facilities, which this fire station would fall in that category. So fire stations are permitted use in the P zoning district, and the preliminary site plan that they provided shows that the site would adhere to all setbacks and bulk regulations like lock coverage and signage landscaping, things like that, which are reviewed later at the building permit submittal. And staff believes that the PF zoning district would be appropriate here, like I said, because the site plan already adheres to all those requirements. And the 60-foot height allowance would provide more wiggle room for constructing an antenna atop the building, as well as training towers and other types of infrastructure. So I won't do the surrounding zoning because we have that in the front, but the areas north and west of the site could largely be categorized as residential, while the areas to the south and east are largely categorized as recreational or agricultural and low-density residential. Staff doesn't believe that this zone change would adversely affect the value or future use of neighboring properties because the area is low-density, and the development of a fire station in this location would not result in significant increases to traffic and local congestion. And it would also help reduce response times in the area. Terms of availability of public utilities, the site has readily available water, sewer, electric, and gas along Crawford Street. And according to the KDOT traffic count map of the city Salina produced in 2021, the streets and intersections adjacent to this site range from about 1,500 to 4,200 vehicles a day, which is much less than some other arterial roadways in the city that could see around 15,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day. Have a more zoomed in one. So the city's land use map in the comprehensive plan shows this site as parks and open space in the future land use designation, and public service facilities like fire stations are identified as a secondary use in the parks, open space, future land use map. So that means that this proposed zone change is congruent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, and a land use map amendment would not be needed complimentary to this application. In terms of parking, fire station parking is determined based off of the number of beds in the sleeping quarters and the square footage of office area. Two off-street parking spaces are required for each bed to accommodate the shift changes when a lot of times everybody leaves at the same time and the whole new staff all arrives at the same time. And this conceptual site plan shows that the 18 existing spots in this area, the Berkeley Fields, are going to be removed, and 24 are being proposed in, in the spots. So as of now, planning staff cannot definitively determine the exact number of required parking because we need dimensions and we need labels on the site plan in order to give a definitive answer on that. But it appears that we, there are 13 beds on that site plan, so at least 26 parking spaces are going to be needed, but we're going to have to get to the details at the time of building permit submittal. So staff, in regards to this application, has prepared the following staff findings. Number one, the existing Fire Station Number Four is too small and needs to be replaced, and the relocation of Fire Station Four is in the city's five-year capital improvement plan. Construction of a new updated fire station would be beneficial to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding area and the city. A PPF zoning designation is a more suitable zoning classification for future fire station site than current A1 zoning. The preliminary site plan conforms to all the PPF zoning setback requirements. The area surrounding the proposed site is relatively undeveloped as it's near the east edge of the city. The KDOT traffic study shows that the location where this station would be located has significantly less vehicular travel, traffic than many other parts of the city along arterials. Adequate utilities are in place, and the subject property shows as parks, open space, and the future land use map. And with that, it appears that the commission has the following options. They could recommend approval as requested. They could postpone consideration to a future meeting date if more information is needed. Or they could recommend denial if they could provide findings in support of that. So staff would recommend approval of this rezone request. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and staff and the applicants are here for questions.
Did you want to go ahead and present the other part of?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we're actually going to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Hirsch, pick up and talk about the proposed plat of the property, and then we'll take your questions at that time.
Mr. Andrew. So I won't go through the background, but I will just kind of reiterate what this particular item is about. So currently, Fire Station Number Four, which is sandwiched between Briar Cliff on the west and Marymount on the east, is outliving its purpose in that it isn't large enough to meet all the fire department's needs, especially with the growth of the city moving east and south. And they feel that a new Fire Station Number Four at the proposed location where the Markley Edition is located at the corner of Markley and Crawford would be a better strategic location, both for an increased-sized fire station and a better-positioned fire station for emergency responses to the south and east parts of Salina. So that would be the nature of what we're proposing. The existing fire station, which was constructed in 1964, is a little under 4,000 square feet, and the fire department is looking to construct a new building that would be closer to 20,000 or a little over 20,000 square feet. So an increase of about five times and would have additional bays. The current fire station has three bays. The proposed fire station would have five bays. And all of this is subject to design finalization, but those are some of the preliminary conversations that are taking place with this project. When we look at a new preliminary plat subdivision, one of the first things we look at is the surrounding context and the direct access of the perimeter streets. In this case, the proposed subdivision wouldn't have any new internal streets, but would have direct access to two perimeter streets. And Mr. Michelson has done a perimeter street analysis that I'd like to go through to kind of highlight some of the aspects of those adjacent streets. So on the west, we have Markley Road. Markley Road currently is paved to an interim standard, and we'll go through what that means first. So these are the standards that the city has for various street classifications. You have an interim street standard, and then you have the city street standard. And all perimeter streets are required to meet the city street standard, but those, so there's, there's the city street standard, which is the standard that, that all perimeter streets have to meet. However, there is an interim street standard in which streets could potentially be temporarily used as, with a deferred agreement, whether it be a development agreement or a no protest agreement, in which the improvement from the interim street standard to the full city street standard is deferred to a later date. But all streets, perimeter streets, have to meet the interim street standard. So the first thing we look at is, do the perimeter streets meet the interim street standard? And if so, what would it take to get them to the full city street standard? And so the interim street standard is a 24-foot paving width, a minimum width of 24 feet, six inches of concrete or eight inches of asphalt, no curb and gutter necessary, and sidewalks on at least one side. The full city street standard takes that and requires a width of at least 33 feet in your, with the road. Again, the same thickness of six inches of concrete, eight inches of asphalt, and rather than having no curb and gutter or side ditches, it does require that the road have curb and gutter and that it have sidewalks on both sides. So when we're talking about a city street standard, we're talking about a full urban street that, that is on the site or adjacent to the property. So if we look at the analysis that Mr. Michelson did, again, Markley is, meets an interim standard where it, it has paving and it has a sidewalk on one side. The side is the east side adjacent to the proposed fire station. Crawford, which was constructed in 1985, is a little bit of a mixed bag, where you have, I'm going to pull up Google Earth, you have some curb and gutter along a portion of it, but as you, you get further to the east, it eventually becomes a side ditch, open ditch road, and pinches down to a two-lane road that has a width of 24 feet. So when you get to the Presbyterian Manor, the curb and gutting, curb and guttering ends, and it narrows down to a two-lane road that has 22 feet. So if we look at the analysis that Mr. Michelson did, it starts at 50 feet, and then when you get to about 388 feet from the intersection or from the northwest corner of the plat, you, and you could just get past the Presbyterian Manor, it starts pinching down and narrowing down to 22 feet, and there is no sidewalks. So what that means is, in order for Crawford to meet the interim street standard, you would have to have sidewalks added along the south side of Crawford on the north side of the, the proposed fire station property, and the road would have to be widened to at least 24 feet for the full length to meet the interim standard. To meet the full city standard, Markley would have to have curb and gutter on both sides and sidewalks on both sides. And then Crawford would have to have curb and gutter extended from where it ends, just east of Presbyterian Manor, all the way to the full 286 or 288.6 foot length with, with a sidewalk as well. So Crawford would require widening, curb and guttering, and, and sidewalks. We look at street access. The proposed plan has two access points, and Mr. Michelson did overlay the proposed preliminary plat on top of the aerial photo so we can have some context of the surrounding area. The existing curb cut or entrance point to the Berkeley Family Recreational Area would be reused, and that would be the primary entrance off of Markley, and that's a 42-foot wide entrance that would have a 50-foot access opening in the plat. And that would be for vehicles for all of the staff and employees, as well as any visitors that may come. And the trucks would also, trucks being the fire trucks and ambulances, would also enter off of Markley and then pull into the storage bays. The exit would have a much wider opening, where you'd have a 100-foot opening along Crawford. And the purpose of that is so that, that there is easy deployment of emergency vehicles in emergency, emergency situations, whether that be their ambulance apparatus or their fire trucks. And the code does have a maximum curb width or entrance opening of 30 feet, but it does allow for an extended or widened entrance to be permitted with permission from the city engineer if justification is made. In this case, the applicant states that the purpose for these widened openings is to make sure that there's easy and quick, quick access into and out of the site to respond in those emergency situations. Drainage and utilities. There are a number of utilities already available on the site. I'll pull up the utility layers so that we can take a look at those. So there is a 20-inch water line that runs along the north side of the property within the south edge of the Crawford Street right-of-way. There's also a 20-inch water line that, that runs south all the way along the east end of, east edge of Markley, all the way down to the south. That water line would be retained. There's also an 8-inch sewer line that runs south from here. This 8-inch water or sewer line, sanitary sewer line, will have to be relocated because this is the location of the proposed building. So this 8-inch sewer line would be relocated to an easement that would be on the west end of the property. For drainage, there is an existing detention pond that is in the northeast corner of the property. This detention pond collects water runoff from the park and all of the ball fields, as well as this property in its existing state. The applicant is proposing to continue to use this detention pond for retaining water. So this, all the water from the proposed Markley Edition would be directed to the detention pond, and staff would note that the Parks Department is currently working with Schwab Eaton on a greater plan to deal with stormwater runoff on the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. So in order to improve drainage for the park and keep a lot of the stormwater runoff that is, is running onto the fields, not off the fields, they are working on a new infrastructure plan that would get, that would keep the water off the fields and direct it more directly into the pond. And so our city engineering staff has been working with both Cal Valley on this particular plan and Schwab Eaton on that particular potential plan in the future to make sure that the pond is properly sized and can collect the water, and then it slowly gets released at a slower release rate underneath Crawford, where it runs into this ditch that's on the north side of Crawford and to the north. In addition to the sanitary sewer and water, there is availability of gas and electric, and Evergy does have overhead power lines in this area. When city engineering staff were reviewing the drainage plan that was submitted by Cal Valley, they did have a few items that they wanted to see addressed, and primarily they dealt with easements and some of their calculations. The easements that they would like to see changed would be the labeled utility easement on the south end. They would like to see this widened to 30 feet and become a combination drainage and utility easement, because some of the water that is going to be run to the site from the south, from the ball fields, will eventually come through here and will need to be directed into the pond through this easement. That same water will also be directed to the pond through the easement on the east side, and so that would have to be a utility and drainage easement combination, as well as the piece here on the north, where water would be discharged out and underneath Crawford. So there are a number of, of combination easements that would need to be added to the plat to satisfy engineering department. There is also a need for a revised plan to incorporate the off-site runoff from the south Berkeley Family Recreational Area, and that there needs to be a breakdown of the C-values used for the existing and developed sub-areas as, as that, as part of that drainage plan. So the easements would be the drainage easement for the existing drainage pond and detention basin that is currently there and will be retained and reused. The utility and drainage combination easements. And then there's also a 30 or 20-foot easement that would protect that 20-inch water line that goes north-south through the property. And there's a utility easement on the west end as well that would be needed for this particular plat. Right-of-way. One thing that is a little bit unique about this project when staff was doing research is you have Crawford Street, which has existed through, as a county easement. So this section of Crawford, even though the road is there, the city of Salina doesn't have proper right-of-way for it. So 50 feet of right-of-way will be dedicated for the south half of Crawford along, along that frontage. And when we did research on Markley, because Mark, Markley was the old airport runway or part of the airport runway, it was a street that was named, but was never actually created in terms of right-of-way being dedicated. And so what that means is, we would ask the applicant and the, and the engineering staff, Cal Valley, to extend the western boundary of the plat to the east side of, of Markley so that, that right-of-way for Markley could be dedicated as part of the subdivision. So that would be something that, that we would ask of the applicant as well. Site improvements on the site. Site improvements will be needed for the roads, particularly upgrading Crawford to an interim standard. Markley currently does meet an interim standard, but Crawford does not, so a sidewalk will need to be added along the south edge of, of the street. There are drainage considerations that will need to probably be made once the drainage study is finalized with engineering staff, and that will probably result in some modifications or improvements to the existing drainage pond. And there's also this 8-inch sewer line that runs north-south through the property where the building will be. That sewer line would have to be relocated. So those would be the proposed improvements that would directly affect the proposed plat. Relationship to the comprehensive plan, as Mr. Aiken mentioned, the property has a future land use designation of parks, which is appropriate for city infrastructure and city buildings, such as the fire station. So that would be appropriate. We We do have a number of alternatives for you. One, the planning commission could approve the proposed preliminary plat of the Markley addition subject to any conditions the commission deems appropriate if the commission finds that the preliminary plat conforms with the plat review criteria in attachment number five, which is our standard criteria for reviewing preliminary plats. And that is attached to this particular packet. The planning commission could recommend that the consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or city staff to provide additional information. Number three, the planning commission could vote to deny the proposed preliminary plat of the Markley addition if you don't feel it conforms in your view to all of the criteria in attachment number five. Staff's recommendation, we believe that approval of this preliminary plat incorporating all public improvements and shown on the plat drawing is subject to a number of conditions that we have on page 10 and 11, which we can go through if you need to, but they have all been addressed already in this report. So with that, staff would take any questions? And we can hear from you or the applicant if you have no questions.
For the benefit of the commission, we let you know that we have the representative city engineering here. We have engineers from Call Valley who've worked on this, the architect working on the fire station project, and representatives of the fire department here, all, as well as the deputy city manager who's helping to manage that if you have any questions about the project.
Commissioner Waters needs to address the commission.
Dean and Dustin, do I need to recuse myself since I am an employee of Schwab Eaton? And you mentioned that they were doing some drainage work on this project.
That's involved with the Parks and Recreation Department and not associated with this project.
Yeah, it's a separate project that would be potentially a future project, but it doesn't affect this project directly.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any questions of Spencer or Dustin in regards to this application?
I had a question. The property owners, like, for example, Presbyterian Manor, Salina Golf Course, or any residents, have they been contacted? And if so, have any responded back regarding this project?
I have not received any comments from any of the adjacent property owners or the general public. I'll refer to Ms. Aiken if he has or any other staff members.
I haven't heard anything as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Of course.
Dustin, I had a question. I'm incredibly familiar with Markley Road. I ride and run there a lot. And so on the west side over there, that seems like that's the straightest shot. It seems like there's a long distance, or I mean, a lot of width there between the curb, I mean, the driving lane and then the edge of that concrete. It looks like it's at least 10 feet or so. Is there any possibility that could be converted to more of a dedicated sidewalk instead of whatever you call it right now? I think it's marked with bike lanes, but...
That might be a question for Mr. Stack about what, how they would, they're treating that shoulder area that's outside the traveled way. Markley Road is identified as a bike route, but I don't know if Mr. Stack would go so far as to say those are bike lanes, but we might want to let him address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Stack, city engineer. Yeah, we've, I think we have marked them with bike lanes. They are 10-foot wide, so they, or I can't remember if it's a share or actually a bike lane. I don't know. It's interesting because our bike group that we've met with over the years is somewhat mixed on whether they like that route. So they've, they like Cedar Ridge. We actually have a Cedar Ridge route over to Merrymount that they like quite a bit. They don't mind Markley, but Crawford is kind of no man's land.
I have gotten more flat tires on Markley Road than I can count.
Really? Okay.
Those grooves in the pavement, or those, you know, the gaps in the concrete there. Yeah.
Some big gaps. Old concrete pavements. It's a little rough in some spots. So our bike group has kind of proposed maybe getting rid of that route. It hasn't happened yet, or we have not marked it. It's still marked. And they're plenty wide for riding a bike. So they are nice for that reason, but at this point, we don't have it really programmed for the future or any new pavement there for bike lanes.
So if we require sidewalks on the east side over there where the fire station would be, what would that look like? Would they be raised and would they also be...
I believe there's a sidewalk now.
Well, yeah, there's a small sidewalk there, but there, would these be the wide sidewalks like what's on Ohio, for example, on South Ohio?
What's on Ohio is a shared hike bike trail. The interim street standard envisions a standard sidewalk. It doesn't envision a hike bike trail per se.
Right. Just a five-foot sidewalk on the south side of Crawford there. East of Markley is what this one probably would include since it's already got a sidewalk in that area right there.
So as part of this project, because there's already an existing sidewalk along Markley, a sidewalk would only be needed to be added along the north property line, but not necessarily the west property line.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Down in that same view, I noticed, I guess this has more to do with the preliminary plat, that we are keeping the existing entrance that right now is for the ball fields there. Is that correct? Is that going to be dedicated specifically to the fire station?
Yeah, so I'll pull up the graphic that maybe I'll tie that together in your minds. This is the proposed preliminary plat related on aerial photo. So you can see the existing driveway that's there. That's not proposed to change. So what would happen is a fence of some kind is constructed along the south property line to separate the fire station property and training facilities from the ballpark that's to the south. So there would have to be some redesign work done in the parking lot so that vehicles can get through. So that means that some of these parking stalls will be removed so that you can loop through and go the opposite direction. And no longer would you access these parking spaces. Whether they from this entrance point, we would access them from an entrance point to the south. So there'd be an entrance point down here. Now, there has been conversations about adding another kind of midway entrance point over here just to kind of add convenience to the park. That hasn't been finalized as to where that would go.
And that was my concern, if there would be proper entry exit.
There would be, it would be, there'd be pretty good separation still. I mean, you're probably talking 300 feet. So you wouldn't be adding like a whole bunch of curb cuts necessarily along Markley, but you would be adding a curb cut and entrance point into that north field that would be open for the public.
Any further questions, the staff?
Dustin, what would be the requirements on that fence?
I imagine it would be just a solid six-foot fence. There wouldn't be any requirements per se. I'm just, it would be something that they would like to do in-house just to keep that separation from the ballpark and the fire station facility. But that could be a question for the fire department and the design team.
Would the applicants like to address the commission?
Can anyone hear me?
Don't be bashful.
I'm not, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone, members of the commission. It's Tony Snyder, Fire Chief. I'd just like to say thank you for taking your time to look at this. I'm under the weather a little bit and felt safer here than putting you all at risk. So I am listening intently and am here to answer any questions you might have of me. And thank you again.
Kirk Stover, Italian chief here in Salina. One thing, I went out to the property today and just kind of took a big picture glance of how's it going to look. Well, I actually set a cone. Set an orange cone at the northwest corner of where it's kind of where we have it planted right now. So as you guys drive by there now, you'll see an orange cone sitting there. And I talked to the grass cutting guy out there at Ball Diamonds and told him where that cone was, so don't move it. So if anybody drives by there and sees that cone, you can kind of get a perspective. And it's a pretty big project, so I'm excited and I think we're all excited. If you guys got any questions, I'd be happy answering for you.
Tony, or you, have you had a chance to look at the staff recommendations regarding the plat?
So what's in the commission for today? Yeah, we did read through that.
Yes. Yeah, I've covered it all as well, and everybody's been very good. The collaboration has been fantastic with all involved and working through everything and a number of, you know, different opportunities, I'll say. It seems to be moving in the right direction and looking at this, you know, from a 25-year plan, we're on the right path.
And any problems with the dedication of those easements?
That, to me, is, I don't believe there's going to be, you know, like I said, we're very collaborative with this. Everybody's been fantastic in the communication and helping me understand some of the things and as well as the design team and with Call Valley and everybody else. And, you know, everything's been wonderful at this point. We expect things to move along. We'll see challenges, of course, but we expect to get through them at some point to a very good solution.
Chief, I'll also add to this. Rick, our architect, is here present. So if he has any issues with anything we've discussed tonight, I'm sure he'd be glad to step up and say some things, but I think he's letting the city handle what the city needs to handle, and he's kind of a more on the design on our structure. So I'm sure if he has, he has abundant history with public buildings. He does several fire stations. We toured two of them in Kansas City last year that he was a builder for. So we're thrilled to have him. He's taught us more thing about fire stations than we've learned my, I guess, my 25-year career. He's told me how to build them. I've just lived in them, so.
Can you tell me, will there be EMS services at this station?
Yes, yes.
And so those could be a potential benefit to sports injuries that might happen.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no different than being on the golf course.
Yeah, we're going to have, the units that are currently at Station 4 are currently slated for the new Station 4, which is, right now, it's Engine 3, or excuse me, Engine 4 and Medic 4, which will move. And at a future date, once the apparatus plan gets kind of moving along, that'll be a quint apparatus. And again, this is a, not a five-year plan. This is looking at 25 years down the road, expansion of the city. We're being proactive and being prepared for the future as well. So we'll have all of our resources, all of our response capabilities there, just as we do at the current Station 4.
Chief, one question that came up earlier, and I attempted to answer, but I wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak on that fence or that separation wall that was being proposed between the Fire Station 4 property that we're looking to preliminary plat and the park. Is that a solid fence? Is it a wall, chain link fence? What have the conversation been about that? What has the conversation been about that?
Really, there hasn't been, per se. I believe it's going to be something that is going to be a little more strengthened, I'll say. It's got to protect the facility. I won't say hardened, but I'd say of substantial, you know, able to withstand certain things. And Rick and I have had brief discussions with the team from WSKF and whatnot. So we're not sure. I think that's going to be part of the design project on how do we do that that is aesthetically appropriate, yet provides a secure protection for the facility as well. So it's, there's no definitive answer right now.
Is the new housing development at Magnolia and Markley area, is that covered by Station 4?
Yes, it is, sir.
Thank you.
This may be a little off topic, but what plans, if any, are in place for the old Station 4?
That, this is Chief Snyder again. I know there's been discussion with other city entities, but that's really kind of, I don't know specifically. I know there's a need for space. So I don't think anything's been decided yet. I don't believe the fire department will maintain that unless, because I believe other entities need that space for certain things. But nothing's been decided that I've been made aware of.
This is Jacob Wood, deputy city manager. And I would agree with that statement. I think there's several departments that are kind of arm wrestling over whether they get that facility or not, and we just haven't made a plan for it just yet. But anticipate we'll probably keep it in our inventory for storage or some kind of use at this point.
Thank you. Just curious.
Any further questions of the applicant or the Call Valley or the architect or Mr. Stack?
We would just point out that this is fairly unique as far as our drainage studies go because we're not just looking at the runoff generated by the fire station construction, but a substantial area to the south. If you've driven or ridden on Markley Road, you know, there's quite a bit of slope there, and it's all going to the north. And so there's a lot of off-site runoff that needs to be taken into account in addition to what would be coming off the fire station site. So that's the reason for the collaboration between, we've got two groups of engineers and we've got Parks and Recreation and Fire, both looking at drainage. And so we're going to coordinate those two.
Dean, is that a detention pond or a retention pond?
It is detention. It, there's an outlet that, and then it goes underneath Crawford and flows to the north.
Yeah, just more clarification on that, Dan Stack, city engineer. Thank you. Yeah, trying to coordinate with Parks on that pond and the history of it. It actually, the structure, if you've driven by there, you'll notice that it's pretty high up, so it doesn't drain. So it's like, it's almost at the top of the bank. So it's holding water today and it currently will. So I guess it's actually, at this point, a retention pond, right, Dean? It doesn't drain.
Yeah, because it's not a dry bottom pond.
Right, it's not a dry bottom. So just so you know, it's one of those kind of ponds that when we're looking at maybe a long-term plan for it, it would probably be, at this point, we're thinking it's going to be a retention pond with an overflow of some sort to handle. The fire station flow is actually pretty minimal compared to the whole flow to the south. And with the Parks and Rec project trying to improve drainage on the baseball fields, we've asked Call Valley to take that into account as well when they look at the pond and the sizing. And so that's the point of the comment on the plat for looking at off-site drainage. We always have that in our requirements, but this is a little more unique where it's another city entity and another city project that we'd like some more work done to see if we can size the pond appropriately for really everything. It's a pretty good-sized pond. It could be, hopefully, a nice feature. You know, we just eliminated a pond at Bill Burke, or Bill Burke, not Bill Burke, Jerry Ivy. So this one actually has the potential to be a nice water feature, future water feature for that area and something that we want to make sure we look at before we just, it hasn't been maintained. It's kind of a, it could be a nice pond, but it's not right now, but it could be. So that's kind of our goal, getting it to drain and handle this water shouldn't be an issue and just maybe see what else it can do. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any further questions, the applicant? Anybody from the public care to comment on this application? And Dustin, do we have anyone online?
We do not have anyone from the public on Zoom.
Okay. Well, let's go back to the rezoning, I'm sorry, the Z23-7. And let's handle that one first. Is there a motion on...
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the recommendation we approve the zoning.
And is there a second?
Second?
Would that be including the findings on pages 13 and 14?
Yes. Yes. With improvements, yes.
So there's a motion to approve application Z23-7 with the staff findings on there. In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Now, let's move on to application P23-6 for this plat approval. Is there a motion on this plat approval?
My biggest concern was the drainage, and I'm
And, and I'm happy to see that we have several entities that are working together on that. So I feel very confident with that. And with that in mind, I move we approve the preliminary plat for application Z 23 dash, I'm sorry, P 23-6 with the recommendations one through seven found on pages 10 and 11 of staff report.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve application P 23-6 with the seven staff recommended alternatives. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all, appreciate the time.
Our next agenda item is item 3.2. And wanted to explain to the commission that that is a public hearing item because the plan that's being presented for your consideration under application 3.2 is a substantial modification from what was approved by, at public hearings in the past. And so the request is to combine three individual planned development district tracks at the corner of Crawford and Marymount into a single site to allow construction of a Dollar Tree store on that site. And Mr. Hers is gonna give you an overview of both the history of the Wilbur PDD and what is proposed at that corner now.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. On the aerial photo, we have the subject property that we're looking at with this final amended development plan. It is these three tracks of, of land that you see on, on the aerial photo. To the north, you have R1, single-family dwellings. To the south, you have some R3, multiple-family dwellings. To the east, you have multiple-family dwellings as well, in the, in the form of Brookdale Senior Living. And then to the west, you have the Brookridge Strip Center, which is part of the Wilbur PDD. So the Wilbur PDD consists of this outline here. So you have most of the development, or most of the, the PDD being already developed. And this would be the final piece. So when we look at the Wilbur PDD, we have the original 1983 final development plan. And that final development plan had seven different tracks. And those seven different tracks had nine proposed buildings. And the first building that was built is the, the property at the north, northeast corner of Crawford Place in Marymount. And this is a brick office building. That's a little over 4,000 square feet. And it was constructed in 1983. The second building that was built is also a brick office building. And it was constructed on Track 2 in 1996. The third is a brick office building that was constructed in 1998. And then the, the most recent building that was constructed involved an amendment to the original 1983 Wilbur PDD. And that PDD took multiple buildings and condensed them into one multi-development, multi-tenant development that has a bank as the main anchor of, of the development with multiple retail and office spaces in it. And that, that building was built in 2000. And so that brings us to the, the developments of Tracks 4, 5, and 6, which are these tracks here. And as Mr. Andrew mentioned, the original plan that was adopted in 1983 had four buildings on these three tracks. And what is being proposed is a significant deviation from that where instead of having three, four different buildings with different parking lots and different landscaping areas, we have one single building unit and, and parking and landscaping surrounding that. So it has a different form of development. It's a different type of development and it's a different number of, of units that are being proposed. So the site plan of the property is such that you have access off of Crawford Place. There's two entrance points. And they are both in excess of the 30-foot maximum. And the reason for that is for truck deliveries. The applicant has provided a truck turning template site plan to show how trucks would enter and exit the site in order for deliveries to be brought to the store for their inventory. And so they do seem to have justification for additionally widened streets. One thing that is unique about the Wilbur PDD that you typically don't find is that the edge of the concrete or the, the back of curb to back of curb is the total width of the private road. So in, in most situations where you have a public road like Crawford, you have some distance between the property line and the back of the curb where you can have radiuses that allow for truck maneuverability so that you can have a 24-foot wide or 30-foot wide opening. In this case, you don't have that distance where you can have radiuses. So all of that widening has to take place on, on the site plan itself. So that would be the reason for the extra-wide curb cuts that are, that are being proposed by, by the applicant. The site also has landscaping. And the landscaping is being proposed along both Crawford Street and Crawford Place. That would be the front yard landscaping. In addition to the front yard landscaping, because they are adjacent to single-family residential to the north, they're also required to have a six-foot solid screening fence and landscaping and a 15-foot wide landscaping buffer. So the landscaping plan that is being proposed by the applicant does meet all of the landscape requirements. For site lighting, they have offered a photometric site plan that shows how the site would be lit up at night. This is a combination, this photometric heat map is a combination of wall pack lighting that would be downcast around the perimeter of the building as well as a couple of parking lot light poles, poles that would have downcast shoebox lighting as well. And you can see that the biggest impact is primarily isolated to the area surrounding the building as well as the parking lot with minimal light spill along the adjacent properties where you have residential dwellings. This is the heat map. There's also 3D diagrams of, of what it looks like from the southwest at night as well as what it looks like from the northeast at night. Elevation drawings, because this is a planned development district, one of the tasks that the planning commission has is to look at the materials, colors, and designs of the proposed buildings and determine whether or not they are quality designs and materials and whether or not they are compatible and fit in well with the existing character of the Wilbur PDD. And so what is being proposed in this case is primarily EPHUS, which is a stucco-type surface that is applied to the building and has kind of a smoothish texture to it and can be colored in, in different colors, which they have different types of tobes and beiges, greens and whites that they're employing in this case. So the, the primary architectural features on the south side, which would be the face, the, the face of the building that would face Crawford Place, or Crawford Street, rather, is there is kind of an arched parapet over the main entrance, which would have a glass storefront. There is a four-foot wainscoting of a concrete block veneer. So split veneer, concrete blocks that would be around the four-foot, around the four-foot wainscoting around the building. And then the balance would be EPHUS with a metal cornicing that would be painted to match the, the color scheme shown on the elevation drawing. The east and west sides would have these bump-out columns that would bump out four inches. There'd be five of them on each side to break up the mass of the building and add an architectural interest. And here's kind of a, the color scheme in specific form. They're all showing William Paints and that the green is a color called Envy. The lighter beige is called Balanced Beige. There is an aesthetic white that is the lighter color that you see. And there's a virtual taupe that is the, the darker taupe color that you, that you see in the, the rendering. The sign would be an eight-foot sign that's, has 36 square feet of sign area. It would have a similar color scheme. The trash enclosure would be located, I'll go back to the site plan for that. It's shown here. So this would be the trash enclosure location. And this is a picture of an example of what they're proposing. Staff would note that in the city of Salina, all trash enclosures have to be fully enclosed. What that means is that the gates would have to be, rather than chain link fence, they would have to be either solid wood or solid metal panels. Chain link or chain link with slats is not sufficient to meet the code requirements. So that's something we would note. When we look at the proposed building and the elevations in the context of the Wilbur PDD, we do see that all of the existing buildings in the Wilbur PDD are exterior with brick. So there is a historic precedent and expectation of, of brick for the, the facades. This is a look from the corner of Marymount and Crawford, looking northeast. This is the Brookridge addition. This is the multi-tenant development that was the most recent building constructed in 2000. This is the same building viewed from Crawford. This is the same building viewed from basically the entrance of where the proposed Dollar Tree store would, would be located. This is the first building that was constructed in 1983. It's an office building that has brick and glass facade. Primarily, the, the primary notable architectural feature is the brick columns. This is the second building that was built, another brick office building. The third building was also a brick office building. And then we have the elevations that the applicant provided in their packet. When staff reached out to them requesting if there were any designs that the applicant had that would be more compatible and congruent with the characteristics of the Wilbur PDD primarily using brick materials versus all EPHUS with a little bit of split concrete blocks. They did respond that the model that they're proposing is their standard brand and that the, they would, they would prefer using a model that is their standard brand and has a more modern appearance than the existing buildings. Staff, however, would note that there are options that they could, they could look at that would adhere to their standard brand as well as being modern and still being congruent and compatible with the nature of the existing Wilbur PDD. And so what we did is we just did a research of other Dollar General brick stores just to show examples of things that they have done in other communities that might fit in better with the nature and characteristic of the Wilbur PDD. And so a lot of these have similar architectural designs where there's archways over the entrances or raised parapet over the entrances. But they are incorporating a lot of brick material, primarily brick material. And even if you, you weren't to use all brick material, there are options that they've used in other communities where, rather than using the, the concrete blocks, the split blocks for their wainscoting, using brick for their wainscoting and their columns. And so that was an idea that staff has brought forward as an alternative that might make their, the buildings more compatible with the existing Wilbur PDD. So if you were to imagine what they've done in other communities with their brick buildings and apply it to their elevation drawings that they proposed, what that would look like is instead of having stacked concrete blocks along the, the wainscoting on the four feet, around the four-foot bottom of the buildings, this would be brick. And then the four-inch bump-out columns could be brick as well. So even though it wouldn't be 100% brick like you have in the other buildings, it would lend an appearance of, of being more compatible with, with what is currently there on the site. So that would be something that staff would ask the planning commission to look at and consider. And then there's also the loading and loading area that staff has been working with the applicant on. And the off-street parking regulations require that all retail stores like this have a loading and loading area that's dedicated and separate from the driving aisles and parking stalls simply so that when you have vehicles parked, you have customers and a delivery occurs, people can still get in and out of their parking stalls. And the way that's typically handled is you have a separate dedicated loading and loading area or you commit to having all of your deliveries occur in off-business hours. So that would be a second alternative. And so what we would ask is that the applicant redesign the site so that the loading and loading area is independent of the existing parking stalls and driving aisles or that they issue us a, a letter on their letterhead telling us and informing us that all deliveries would occur in off-business hours, which would disqualify them from having deliveries during business hours, but it would give them the opportunity to accept deliveries when the parking lot is empty. Off-street parking, the parking regulations would require this site to have 36 off-street parking spaces. Forty off-street parking spaces are being proposed. So it does meet all of those criteria. The sign regulations for the Wilbur PDD are limited by the C2 district sign limitations, which allow one square feet per lineal foot of building frontage, which in this case is gonna come out to 200 square feet of sign area that would be allowed. And you can have up to two signs. And so the, the drawings that we received show a wall sign on the building frontage facing south. We don't have the dimensions of that sign, but we would need that as well as a, a ground sign that we have calculated the dimensions of, which is 36 square feet. And those would appear to meet the sign regulations barring confirmation of the, the wall sign. So in the review process, the planning commission is, is responsible for reviewing the plan, determining if it demonstrates satisfactory quality of design and compatibility with other uses and structures in the neighborhood. We do have a few alternatives for you. One, you could approve the proposed amended final development plan to allow construction of a Dollar Tree store as submitted. You could approve the proposed amended final development plan subject to certain revisions or conditions. You could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed. Or you could deny the proposed amended final development plan as submitted citing the reasons thereof. Staff does have the two outstanding items that they've been working with the applicant on. One being the exterior materials being used for the store and having an alternative design that is more compatible with the existing development in the Wilbur PDD. And then the loading and loading area for the truck deliveries. Those would be the two outstanding items that we feel could use to be addressed further. And so the revised final development plan for the proposed Dollar Tree has those two items. And if the planning commission believes these design items need to be addressed before you could approve the amended final development plan, then we would suggest or recommend that you postpone consideration until staff is able to work those remaining items out with, with the applicant. That would postpone the application to October 3rd. Likewise, however, if the planning commission wishes to approve the amended final development plan and request staff work out these items based on whatever input that you might have for us, we could do that with a number of conditions. So what, what that means is we would turn these remaining items that we're working with the applicant on into conditions. And then we would also add the condition that all stormwater runoff be directed towards Crawford Place, away from the adjacent properties so that we're not inundating the adjacent properties with stormwater runoff. And that signage on Tracks 4, 5, and 6. And that signage on tracks four, five, and six shall be limited to a single monument sign, not to exceed eight feet in height, and would be subject to the C2 district regulations, which that is what the applicant is proposing. Number five is that all landscaping sidewalks, circulation, parking, fencing, and other improvements shown on the amended final development plan shall be completed prior to occupancy of the store. And number six, that the project shall be completed in substantial conformance with the approved final development plan, landscape plan, and associated building elevations, drawings, which are hereby incorporated by reference. And lastly, number seven, that a building permit for this project shall be obtained within 18 months of the final plan approval. So with that, staff would take any questions that the commission might have.
Dustin, could you further amplify and explain condition number one on page 10 for the commission?
Okay. All right. So that says the applicant will need to submit revised building elevation drawings to better adhere to the aesthetic of the existing brick buildings within the Wilbur PDD by replacing both the proposed concrete block veneer wainscoting and the EPIS bump-out columns with brick wainscoting and brick bump-out columns. And I do have a note there that the planning commission may amend this condition if a different building design is determined to be more compatible with the existing Wilbur PDD aesthetic. So this would be staff's attempt to not necessarily design the project for the applicant, but identifying perhaps the simplest way to take the existing design and make it compatible with what's already there. If there are other creative solutions, we are certainly open to that. We were just trying to come up with an idea that everybody could potentially live with that would better adhere to what's existing at the Wilbur PDD.
Dustin, could you go back to the shot that you had of Bank Six?
Sure.
There.
Give me a moment.
Kind of from Marymount and Crawford corner.
Okay. All right.
That's, so above the brick there, that's EPIS there, correct?
Yeah, correct. And this is a similar product to what the applicant is proposing. So it's a common product used.
But the brick is more substantial there, though.
Correct.
Okay. And another question I have, there was landscape, there was trees there at that corner previous to Bank Six taking over that location. Once we give a, or get a landscaping plan, and let's say whatever happens to the trees, they're either diseased or what, are they required to replace those?
They are. Typically, there's two ways it happens. One is just self-compliance with the properties, noticing that with a dead tree and knowing that they have to replace it. And that obviously is the preferred method. The other method is we have to identify it as missing, which usually requires an audit of some kind, which we don't frankly do very often just because of workload. It requires us to notice that there's trees that are missing that used to be there. Either that or just taking the plans and going out and doing inspections. So yes, on all of these projects that are commercial projects which have required landscaping, there is an approved landscape plan that they are required to adhere to in perpetuity. And should they fall out of compliance, it is our job to get them back into compliance if they don't voluntarily do so.
Okay. So given that shot of that development there, it all has kind of a similar look. Could you go to the proposed front elevation of the Dollar Tree showing the channel letters on the front of the building? That one. So from a design standpoint, personally, I don't like the big white panel there. And I agree, more brick on those vertical bump-outs, you know, the supports for that arch part or whatever. And then if you had another picture of the Dollar Tree store that had a same color background to it.
This one, or?
One of the ones that you were showing that were alternatives to what they were proposing.
Okay. Yeah, I'll flip through them. So there's, some of these are complete brick, which that's not necessarily what I'm suggesting.
Okay, there's one where the EPIS is not, I mean, it's the same color as the rest of the building. It's not a big white panel. To me, that seems more appropriate. And I'll leave that to the rest of the commission to weigh in on. But to me, I don't like that big white panel there. That seems inappropriate for the rest of the buildings in that area. And then I would like to see more brick on there personally.
I concur, Mr. Chair. And I think these are, there are alternatives there. But I'd be willing to see what the applicant would agree to or be willing to change in order to fit in with the current aesthetic of the buildings that are there already. I think that's established.
I agree. Do we have any more questions for staff at the moment? Would the applicant care to address the commission?
Just a nick of time, didn't I? So Tim Austin with Iron Horse Development as the applicant. So sorry, I missed most of the presentation. I thought it was at five, not at four.
That's all right.
So I had to stop and get cozy burgers.
You're here.
But anyway, I was prepared. We were agreeable to staff's recommendations on the brick. Actually, there wasn't a color requirement, but I had some examples that I'd sent Dustin earlier this afternoon. I can show you what those look like if you want to see color scheme. Just, so that part of it, I think, is fine with us. And then also, on site plan, we were able to adjust the, I think, the two outstanding, adjust the drive aisle and the truck circulation. Originally, we thought we did not require a loading or unloading zone, but we're able to accommodate that and just change some of the circulation pattern. So hopefully you guys can approve it, and we don't have to have any further delay for getting to closing. As far as the architectural elements go, the PDD is pretty open-ended. It goes through Architectural Committee and the PDD, and then to this body as well. And we sent all the elevations to Tom Wilbur, and he was fine with what we submitted. One of the things I think that have to be cautious or cognizant of is that the uses in that, in terms of the existing building, those are historically pretty old. So the first building was built, I believe, let me look here. The first building was built in 1983. And the second's in 96 and 98. And those uses, that those buildings are office tenant uses. And there's, quite frankly, there's a lot of architectural features that, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I like purple, but I've got a lot of friends that like red and blue. I try to tell them, when you mix them, it becomes purple, you know? So, I mean, I think we have to be careful a little bit about subjectivity, about what you might like, what I might like, what other people are. But the thing that I would try to, I guess, in thinking this through, is this is a national retail user nationwide. They have their look, and they're no different than like a McDonald's or Wendy's or something like that. They have their standard architecture. The buildings that are in there, they're office uses. They're 40 years old, sometimes 50-year-old, almost 50-year-old office users. The only retail use is kind of a strip center. It's on, yes, there's EPIS, yes, there's brick, but it's also got standing seam hip roofs on it.
So tell me in specific, then, what you are not liking about our comments.
Well, I think the elevations that we submit, we would hope that she would accept, and we would take staff's recommendation to probably use one of those to, here, I'll pass these around to you. Those are architectural brick samples of what we would look that would be compatible with their color scheme and their look, but would meet the thought process that you would have brick.
And we understand the conformity aspect of wanting to go with a national brand that has a look similar, but obviously, we saw incidents or examples of ones where brick was used quite extensively. I don't think we're talking, you know, bricking the whole thing, just some of those vertical elements. And then also, personally, for me, the color of the background of the EPIS on there, just a personal thought. The rest of the commission could weigh in on that absolutely, and, you know, I'm sure we can come to some agreement there.
I understand.
So the bricking, the vertical parts on the side of the building, is that?
Yeah. And you were talking about the, kind of like on the front there?
The bump-outs. Yeah, and on the front there.
On the front, yeah, that would be fine. The thing about going to all brick, it adds a significant amount of cost to the structure. And unfortunately for us, when we do these things, we have to negotiate the finances at the front end of the project. And so when you add a lot of cost, we have to go back and renegotiate the lease, and that, in today's market, is not an easy deal.
I understand. So the rest of the commission, are you okay with using some brick in some of the elements as Dustin had suggested and we've talked about here?
I feel like the examples that were shown were probably in shopping centers that were already where the whole shopping center was, brick. I would like to see the brick element maybe on the bottom part, I don't necessarily need to see it, you know, as extensive. But, I mean, because if you look at Bank Six and those, you know, they have the brick that's part of the wainscoting, but not much beyond that.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily see it having to go too far with it.
I concur. And I'm not asking for the whole building to be brick, you know? I'm all for the updating and the brightening of it. But in order to tie it in with that Wilbur PDD and the existing buildings, I would like to see some of those darker brick elements on those bump-outs, particularly the verticals. And even if we continued that around the sides of the building, it just ties the whole neighborhood together. But on the other hand, I completely get the Dollar Tree brand and the color scheme that they have. I'm just looking to tie the aesthetics together there for the neighborhood is what I'm looking at.
There was a slide number one, I think, the front elevation. Could you get that up again? And then side elevation?
There. Yep, that one there.
Is that what you're proposing, right there, or is that staff's recommendation?
No, I think that's the typical, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin, but I think staff's recommendation is just to carry that brick along the wainscote up in those vertical elements.
Correct. So the brick would be, and these palusters are columns on the front, and then on the sides, there are five of those as well, where, so you'd have, these columns would be brick just to add a little more substance to it without driving up the cost tremendously.
Sure. And I think that would tie in with that original building that's pretty much all glass storefront, except it's got those brick columns on the exterior. So I think that actually looks pretty good from that standpoint.
Can you hop back to that front elevation, Dustin?
Mr. Austin, if you could expand on the product that you're proposing, is it, are you proposing brick? Are you proposing some sort of concrete casting that has a brick imprint on it? Or what is it exactly you're proposing?
Yeah, so the, what I sent around in terms of photos and those architectural samples, those are a product called Nichahaw paneling. And you can pull it up on the internet. They're simulated brick panels, but they're an exterior form system that really just kind of fastens itself on. So it gives a look of brick. You really can't tell it's not brick, but it's a much more economical solution than brick.
Dustin, could you hop back to that front elevation again?
This one or the other?
Yeah, no, that one right there, that's fine. And for me, again, this is personal, but the background for that fascia there where the Dollar Tree channel letters will go, that looks a lot more pleasing than a bright, white one.
So you just, like a taupe or a cream color, something like that?
Yes.
I think that would be, that would be fine. It's just a matter of getting contrast from the rest of the front, the elevation.
Right, right. I understand that completely. You bet.
I think that'd be fine, Mr. Chairman.
And I think that even the taupe color would pop even more with the darker vertical brick columns there as well.
You bet. Want to drive people to your store?
Absolutely, yeah.
The parking diagram, the revised parking diagram, have you had a chance to review that, or is that?
I have not. My first blush look at it is, and Ms. Austin can correct me, the store moved a little bit to the east. The driving aisle was converted to a one-way driving aisle, so it has a narrower requirement for the driveway so that vehicles can pull in and pull out without interfering with the loading area. So I think something like that could be used. Now, I haven't gone and measured to make sure that it meets all the dimensional requirements, but if it doesn't, I'm confident that we could work with them to get there if it doesn't, because it looks awfully close just by looking at it.
And is the commission comfortable with having staff work out those small details with the applicant, Mr. Austin? Are they okay with that? Okay. All right. We're knocking them out here.
Well, you've put more into that parking diagram as well. You've got diagonal spaces and different things as well. And I appreciate you working with staff. And I agree, Mr. Chair, that, you know, they can work out those details on that.
Okay. Any future plans for the north lot? Yeah, just leave it in the grass, or what?
We don't have any plans for it right now.
But it'd be yours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what could go back there, to be honest. It's just kind of extra land.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the applicant? I think we're good. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to address this application? And do we have anyone online, Dustin?
Do you not have anyone online from the public currently?
Okay. We will bring this back to the commission for discussion and action. Jump in.
This is a tough one, I guess. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to adjust to what staff has already brought forth, and I appreciate all of the information that staff has brought before us as well. I guess I'm comfortable at this point with making a motion to approve application PDD 83-3D with the recommendations of those things that still need review as outlined on page 10 and 11, I believe it is, of our staff report. One thing I would ask, though, is item number five references this as a hotel building. Can we correct that as to store? If I could include that with my motion as well.
Might have been some paste and print stuff there. And that would be also instructing staff to work with the applicant in regards to our concerns over the use of brick on the vertical elements of the bump-outs and also the background on the front fascia. Is that correct?
Correct. And you have those, that information that we were discussing a moment ago, correct, Mr.?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, when you say brick, you're talking about the product Mr. Austin described, which isn't really brick, but it's a simulated brick?
I think we're okay, are we okay with that?
As long as the aesthetic is right and it looks...
From 10 feet away, I think it's...
No, that's fine. I just want, when you say brick, I want to make sure that we're not actually talking brick.
Brick product.
They have brick veneers, what it'd be.
Veneers.
Pseudo-brick.
Glassified as. And then on the vertical elements of the building, and then replacing the wainscote that's down there, and then also the background of the fascia. Now, that was it, right?
Yes. Okay, yep, I've got all that.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve application PDD 83-3D with the seven staff, seven staff recommendations, minus word hotel on number five, and with the, addressing the elements of the brick and the fascia that staff is going to work with the applicant on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carried. Congratulations. Go forth and bill. Legislative matters.
Well, this is, it's a little odd that we're calling this a legislative matter, but it is technically a... is technically a, a text amendment, even though there's a geographic component, but we provided you with an application that was initiated by the City Commission at one of their meetings, and that was to bring back consideration of an amendment to the boundary and effective area of the North Ohio Street Gateway Overlay District. And that is a overlay district that's in our zoning ordinance and it has a legal description that goes with it, and the proposal is to amend the boundaries of that legal description to extend it to the west. And basically what we've said in the staff report is that we have moved the boundary of the city limits, we've moved the boundary of the I-2 zoning district, we've moved the boundary of the Bex Edition plat, we've moved the boundary of the future employment land use area. The only boundary that didn't move was the boundary of the overlay district. And so, the situation that we have is that we have a, a case, and I, I think we have a new map, don't we Dustin, that shows the proposed boundary change?
Let me look here.
The, the, anyway, the, the description of that is that we have a Bex Edition plat for the Bex corporate campus, and the eastern portion of that plat and campus is in the overlay district and the western portion is not, so the property is bisected. And this proposal would make the boundary correspond to the entire property so that we wouldn't have a split in the, in the overlay district. And so, your alternatives would be to recommend approval of an amendment to the boundary and effective area of the overlay district that would look like described on the map. You could postpone consideration of this boundary change to a future meeting date to allow additional steadier discussion of alternatives to extending the boundary, or you could recommend that the boundary remain unchanged. And so, if you did that, the result would be that portions of the Bex corporate campus would be subject to overlay district standards and the primary building site would not. I did want to point out that on March seventh of this year, the Planning Commission approved the site plan and building plans for Bex new facility, and they're not, you found that their facility met the standards of the overlay district, they're not changing the design of that, they're simply picking it up and moving it west and orienting it towards the interstate, but the, the building footprint, the materials, the parking and circulation arrangement, all of that is the same, it's just moving to the west. So, this action would not affect any action that you took previously, it would just make this boundary correspond with the other boundaries and would make a uniform set of standards that would apply to the Bex corporate campus. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you had, but the, the City Commission took note of this and said, well, we've changed every other boundary except this one, so they asked that this be brought forward.
Any questions of staff?
I, I thought that when they moved, relocated the building, that there was some mistake features that they weren't using because they weren't in the overlay district.
There was one-
Talk about wainscoting on-
I'm talking, the only spot where that changed would be on the east side of the building, because they're almost a quarter mile from Ohio Street.
So, they wouldn't be subjected to adding anything?
They would not, they would, they would not be subjected to adding that to the east side because they've moved the building so far away.
So, what would the point of being in the overlay district if, you know, if it's already approved and you're already-
If they were to add additional buildings or facilities, or if they did a future expansion. And it's, for our purposes, it's just kind of odd that we would have to bring the, the driveway and the front entrance before the Planning Commission, but not any of the rest of the property. That's, that's an odd, odd situation. So, the impact directly to their project would not, would not, the primary purpose of doing it is just if they were to expand, add more buildings, do something different in the future, then there would be the single set of standards that would apply.
Any further questions of staff? Do we have anyone online in the audience? Dustin?
We do, we do. We do not have anyone online right now.
And it appears that we don't have anyone in person. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I'd move we approve the application number six dash oh eight A filed by the City Commission for the North Ohio Street Gateway Overlay.
And that's to include the entire twenty-three point nine-two-
Correct.
-Bex Edition?
Correct.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
And moving to a second to approve that application ZO six dash eight A with the twenty-three point nine-two acre addition, the Bex addition. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Administrative items, election of officers.
We have one more item for you this evening. We've shared with you that we've had our, our overview and roles and responsibilities and ethics discussion at our steady session and the cycles for appointments of board members usually end on August thirty-first, and so we have set September as generally the annual business meeting of the Planning Commission, the time for looking at officers. The other thing that's different about the Planning Commission is the Planning Commission has two positions whereby the Planning Commission has representatives that serve both on the Board of Zoning Appeals and on the Heritage Commission. And so, at the time of our report presentation, we listed out the nine appointed members, and those included John Ward and Eric Westlin. We have not heard anything from Mr. Ward about accepting his appointment, and we did hear from Mr. Westlin today that he has declined to accept his appointment to the Planning Commission, so we'll follow up on those items. We also had a youth member that was appointed that has not yet attended a meeting. So, our, our statement in the report that we're at full membership with nine appointed members may not actually be true, since we have seven here today. I'd also point out that based on a previous report involving a different representative that was not Mr. Ivy that carried over in this report, and it is not, not correct that Mr. Ivy is no longer on the Planning Commission and a new representative is needed.
Thought maybe I got kicked out.
Mr. Ivy is, is in fact still here, and so he is eligible for another appointment to the Heritage Commission. But we would start by electing a chair and a vice chair, and Mr. Mike Sell currently serves as chair, and he succeeded Joe Hay, who left the commission in January to join the County Commission. Mr. Mike Sell has served less than one full term as chair and is eligible for another term, and except for brand-new appointees, all current members of the commission are eligible for the position of chair. And Carla Waters served one term as vice chair, and she is eligible for another term. And again, with the exceptions of the brand-new appointees, all other members are eligible for the position of chair. And then Carla Waters has served as representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals this past year. She is eligible for reappointment or revolunteering, and any commission member is eligible for this. The Board of Zoning Appeals meets the third Thursday of each month, and it has seven members, and it deals with appeals and invariances from the strict application of zoning rules such as setbacks or heights or lot coverages that may impact a property or project. And then, Mr. Ivy has served as your Heritage Commission representative, and he is eligible to serve again. The Heritage Commission meets as needed for special meetings to review applications, but it has quarterly meetings otherwise on Wednesdays at four o'clock, and the Heritage Commission has seven members. And so, step one would be to open the floor for nominations for the position of chair, and then we'll proceed from there to opening the floor for nominations for vice chair. And when we're done with that, we'll look for nominations or volunteers for Board of Zoning Appeals and Heritage Commission. So, I would open the floor for nominations for the position of chair.
I nominate Mr. Mike Sell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additional nominations, or would someone like to move that nomination cease?
Move nomination cease.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion, nomination cease. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Now, we have a motion to have Mr. Mike Sell serve as your chair for the next year. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, now, open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'd move that Carla Walter, Carla Waters remain as vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Carla Waters for another term as vice chair. Are there any further nominations or a motion to nomination cease?
Motion to cease.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a session, second that nomination cease. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Ms. Waters being vice chair, please say aye.
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 All right. So, you have a chair and a vice chair. Are there any nominations or recommendations for someone to serve as Board of Zoning Appeals representative for the coming year?
Are you willing to do that again?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. I nominate Carla Waters for that position.
Second? All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate Carla Waters to serve as the BZA representative. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we have the remaining position of representative on the Heritage Commission.
If somebody wants it, they're more than welcome to it. If not, I'll continue on it, I'm fine.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we, Mr. Ivy, continue as our Heritage Commission representative.
I second.
We have a motion and a second that Mr. Ivy continue on the Heritage Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we have fulfilled all of our annual business meeting. We have a chair, vice chair, and representatives. Those appointments will be confirmed by the mayor, and so, we'll, we'll take those to the City Commission. They will pass a resolution to that effect, and then we'll notify Ms. Waters and Mr. Ivy that the City Commission has acted. The Board of Zoning Appeals does meet on Thursday, and so, Ms. Waters already got a packet, and so, she, she already knows. So, they'll be having their annual business meeting on Thursday. So, we have no further items for you other than I forgot to, well, we will have a meeting on the third, and I forgot to mention at the steady session that we were, on the second of October, going to have a proclamation of Community Planning Month for October, and we were wondering if Mr. Mike Sell would be willing to come to that meeting and present the proclamation to the City Commission.
I would love to do that, yes.
Okay, that will be on Monday, October second.
All right. Public forum, any public forum items?
Would you not have anyone online from the public or in the room?
Well, I, I feel it, it is, is in the public forum part of this meeting, there's a, there's a gentleman here that does a, a great service for our public and, and does a great service for our community, but he doesn't get very much recognition at all, and we never see him. So, I'm going to ask David Hawxworth to come out. If he can do that, please, come, come on out.
We get to see him.
Yeah. The public doesn't see you very much, David, but we thank you for what you do. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.